Good evening, welcome everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. First of all, we've got some special recognition for this evening.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Attorney Lackey, Superintendent Bensel. It is with great pleasure that I stand here before you all today to share a little bit of joy with you guys in celebrating Dee Aiden McCauley as the November Student of the Month. Dee Aiden is a quiet student who could very easily go unnoticed, but his teachers notice him. I notice him. We notice his willingness to work hard. We notice his kindness and not just to his classmates, but to everyone. We notice his efforts and his ability just to just do what's right. We're so very proud of him. I'd like to read with you, please, if I may, what his teacher wrote about him, Ms. Lacy Miller, who was a rock star teacher at Freedom Elementary School. Ms. Miller says, "As a second grader, Dee Aiden shows more respect and kindness towards people than some adults. He is always there to give a nice hug when you least expect it, and he is always willing to help out. She can count on him for anything and knows that he will get it done 110 percent. Dee Aiden is an excellent choice for Student of the Month. He is a role model for his peers and is someone that even I strive to be like. He is hashtag all in." Dee Aiden, thank you for soaring at Freedom Elementary School, showing leadership, owning your actions, achieving your goals, and respecting everyone. You, sir, are a prime model for what a Student of the Month should be like. We are so very proud of you, your school family, your home family. We are all so extremely proud of you.
All right, at this time, we will have our Elementary Teacher of the Month.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Bensel, Board Members, and Mr. Lackey. I would like to present to you our All In Teacher of the Month from Indian Hills Elementary School, Ms. Tracy Combs. So many things. I didn't write a speech or anything. I just want to share from my heart all the wonderful things that she does each and every day in our building. She's been in our district probably 20 years, is that correct? 21 years in our district. She teaches second grade math, and she gets results. We see growth from her students every single year. Everything she does is intentional. It's meaningful. The kids retain it. She sings. Her energy level is probably the highest energy level I've ever seen from a teacher. I'm exhausted when I walk out of her classroom, when I go in just to observe for a bit. But I was talking with one of the students the other day, and he was saying that he still sings the songs that Ms. Combs taught him a couple of years ago to help him. Also, I sent a teacher into her classroom to observe because she's an exemplary teacher in our school, and I sent someone in there, and he came out, he said, "Wow, that is impressive. I want to go back in there." How does she do that each and every day? She differentiates for her students. She shows growth. She works. Her attendance, she's there. I can count on her. She's part of our site-based council, and I'm just so thankful and blessed. That's the one great thing that came out of holiday closing, is that we now have Ms. Tracy with us. But she is such a blessing. I appreciate her. I was talking, I've been doing my 90-day conversations with my new employees, and one of them, she doesn't even know this yet, because I just did it today, with employee, and I said, "Who is the one person that stands out in our building that has really helped you acclimate to our building?" And she shared Ms. Tracy Combs' name, and that was Ms. Megan Vance, just so you know that. So we appreciate her in each and everything you do. Today, we had Athlete and Mathlete Day, and she was dressed up like a mathlete nerd today. And she's just all in every day, all day. So I'm very proud and thankful that she works in Indian Hills. Thank you for everything you do.
And now we'll have the Secondary Teacher of the Month from Krishney County Middle School.
Good evening, Board Members, Madam Chair, Superintendent Bensel, Mr. Lackey. My name's Kevin Crowder, Principal of Krishney County Middle School, and I'm proud to present to you tonight Ms. Amanda Huff, who is Krishney County Middle School's representative for the CCPS All In Staff Member of the Month. In addition to teaching 7th grade Integrated Science, Ms. Huff is Chair of our Science Department, is the CCMS Academic Team Coach, she's a member of our PBIS Committee and our PCP Team, and also participated in the Caleb Cohort One. Ms. Huff is also the Infinite Campus Building Coach for CCMS and serves on the Superintendent Advisory Committee. She also provides building-wide support for our new learning platform of Canvas and was a 2020 National STEM Scholar, which you may, if you remember, she was on the front page of the Kentucky New Era earlier this year, participating in that National STEM Scholar event. Ms. Huff is the perfect representation of the CCPS motto, "All In." She's well beyond her years of experience as a teacher. She's just in Year Three. I'll give her student teaching, I'll count that as Year Four, as she was with us during her student teaching experience. And we're very grateful that she chooses, and I'll explain why I say that word that way, chooses to serve the students, staff, and families of Krishney County Middle School, because the truth is, Ms. Huff could teach anywhere. And she chose to be in our district and to be at our school. And I know Mr. Bensel and I have had some friendly, I'll say friendly, competition in hiring in the last several years. And I remember Ms. Huff coming to me and said, "You know, Mr. Bensel's got a science job posted." I said, "Okay, you've got a job here." I didn't even have one posted yet. But we made it work, because I wasn't going to lose her. And I'm very grateful, because truth is, she could. She could teach anywhere. Some people wonder if they chose the right profession. Ms. Huff is an example of what the teaching profession should be defined as. Adjectives such as passionate, enthusiastic, caring, dedicated, servant leader mindset, competitive. She is very competitive and a Green Bay Packer fan. Loving, loving, loyal, and dependable describe what teaching consists of and what Ms. Huff models each and every day. So I'm proud to present to you, Ms. Amanda Huff. Looks like we're going to Buffalo Wild Wings.
All right, next, we will have the Classified Employee of the Month, Krishney County High School.
Give me a second here. I got justice. Kevin, a little shorter than I am. Just saying, Kevin.
Yeah, everybody's short, you are, Mr. Bayman.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board Members, Superintendent Bensel, and Mr. Lackey. Krishney County High School is excited to honor Shawna Johnson as the November All-In Staff Member. Shawna serves as the U Service Director at Krishney County High School. She is the proud mother of two daughters, Maya and Mallory. Ms. Johnson is also a graduate of HCC, and she is currently working towards a bachelor's degree in psychology from Murray State University. When describing the impact Shawna has within our school community, the word "service" stands out. She serves on our school leadership team. She serves our students and family by providing students food for the weekends, providing needed school supplies, and assisting with the back-to-school supply drive at the stadium, providing one-on-one tutoring, providing clothes, and organizing a winter coat drive for our school, providing over 20 families with food baskets for Thanksgiving holiday, providing guidance to families needing additional supports, providing support to seniors during graduation, doing home visits to check on students whenever I ask. She steps right in and rides with me. In addition to being All-In for CACHS, Shawna serves on the Aaron McNeil House Board, is a graduate of the Focus 21st Century Minority Leadership Program, and she is a valued member of Virginia Baptist Street Church. Shawna Johnson is All-In for our students, families, and staff, and her service is greatly appreciated. Ms. Shawna Johnson.
Now we'll have the Administrator of the Month.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Lackey, Board Members. First, before I complete the Administrator of the Month for October, excuse me, for November, I'd like to do a special thank you to our sponsor for the All-In Award this month, the Workforce Education Development, from the Chamber of Commerce who sponsored the activity and the recognition awards tonight. For the Administrator, All-In Award for the Month of November, it's no other than our CCPS Director of Technology, Jason Wilson. I can go on and on, but I'm going to keep it brief. He was elected, selected, hired as a District Technology Director back in July of 2019. And people tell me all the time, "I wouldn't want to have your job right now, Mr. Bensel." Well, I definitely wouldn't want to have Mr. Wilson's job right now, pandemic going virtually. I just can't tell you the impact he's had on our district in the last year and a half moving forward at such a young age, as far as being in the job for that long period of time of a year and a half, and the impact he's had. During the last year and a half, especially since March, he's been imperative, he's been irreplaceable, and in helping and supporting the switch to NTI that we experienced on March 13th. He initialized Zoom meetings for our schools to stay in contact with each other, with our staff, with Central Office, with our students. He initiated the Google Meets platform, a lot of the Google Classroom work we've done, and again, all in a short time. He's been able to help the board members meet virtually to continue board meetings. He equipped the boardroom with the virtual accommodations we have today, so we can stream out live, so people can also stay in touch with what we're doing. That's a great accomplishment for very little price that we've done. I think his biggest accomplishment for about 10 years that I can remember, since I've been a principal at the elementary school, we've been wanting to go one-to-one with technology devices. So in just a short time period, Jason's been able to get 2,500 Chromebooks during the pandemic, when everybody in the world wants Chromebooks. We got them in, we've handed them out, and they're in our students' hands at just the right time to switch over to NTI starting Monday. So, and I can't tell you the conversations we've had, some of the behind-the-closed-doors conversations, some of the other things we've done. He's filled out probably five or six POs and looked at different vendors and did his research, and really worked a lot of hours behind the scenes to make these orders come in and to make the Chromebook get to our students' hands. It wasn't easy at all, and he made it happen, along with the Canvas training, along with the Wi-Fi hotspots, along with every other support process he's done along the way to make NTI possible. On a personal note, he's been a right-hand man to me as far as things that we're doing, looking at advice, guidance, because if you're looking at being a superintendent in this day and age with the pandemic, you have to take into technology issues, considerations, and everything you do. You have to have a great advisor, a great leader in that department, and that's what he is. So I want to thank Jason Wilson for being All-In for CCPS and all he's done for our district. We are doing some great things because of his work and his department's work. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
At this time, if everyone will please stand for our invocation, prayer, and class.
We're reading tonight from Isaiah 41:10. "So do not fear, for I am with you. Do not be dismayed, for I am your God. I will strengthen you and help you. I will uphold you with my righteous right hand."
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day, a day that you have made, and we thank you for all that have received recognition on tonight. We thank you for all the great things they've done in this district. We ask that you continue to bless the superintendent, my fellow board members. We ask a special blessing, and that you will bring comfort to the Harris family during their time of loss. You said in your word, "Blessed are those that mourn, for they shall be comforted." And as we come toward Thanksgiving, we have so much to be thankful for. You said in all things to give you thanks, through every situation, no matter what we're going through, to give you thanks. So we thank you for every employee, every teacher, the students, the grandmothers, the mothers, all that make this community and this school district what it is. Now, we ask for your wisdom. You say wisdom is the principal thing, what all are getting, to get an understanding. So we need the wisdom that comes for you during times of change. We need your strength. You told us to acknowledge you in all our ways, and you would direct our path. We pray in advance that you would direct our path on tonight. This is my prayer, in thy Son Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This regular meeting of the Krishney County Board of Education will now come to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. First item is Communications. Ms. Edwards, do we have any visitors?
No.
Okay. Then we'll have Presentations. First presentation will be the Nurses Report with Ms. Megan Kim.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Bensel, Mr. Lackey. The total number of health office visits, starting with the first in-person day of school on September 8th through October 16th, was 3,660. The health office visits include scheduled and as-needed doctor-ordered medication administration, health referrals for sick or injury visits, vision-hearing screening referrals, and other treatments as ordered by the healthcare providers. Those treatments can include catheterizations, tooth feedings, trick care, and dressing changes. This year, the nurses are responsible for around 100 daily medication administration visits comparatively to the first 10 weeks. Last year, it was around 260 a day. And we currently have 10 insulin-dependent diabetics in six of our schools. Last year, it was 23 in nine of our schools. All of the health office visits and conditions are entered into Infinite Campus, and they continue to complete individualized health plans and emergency action plans with the guardians and physicians. And the mandated health records are still audited for compliance and entered into Infinite Campus, which KDE utilizes to audit for compliance for that. Are there any questions about this person?
It's a lot of visits for a short period of days.
What kind of ventilation you have over at Hopkinsville High School?
I know. You talked about that last year.
I'm telling you. Roof ventilated?
Not anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is the School Reopening Update with Ms. Morris and Mr. Bensel.
Good evening, Madam Board Chair, Board Members, Mr. Bensel, and Mr. Lackey. I'm going to start my report in a very traditional way, and as my report goes on, it will change drastically from what I usually give you. So, as of today, we have 8,315 students enrolled in Krishney County Public Schools. We have 2,050 students enrolled in our Virtual Learning Academy, and we have 6,265 students who are either in the traditional model or a hybrid model with face-to-face instruction. As of 2 o'clock today, our data dashboard information is as follows. Faculty and staff active COVID cases, we have 13. In-person student active cases, we have 23. Virtual Learning Academy active cases, we have three. We currently have 68 students who are quarantined and four faculty-staff members. Now, those numbers have not changed significantly since the last report I gave two weeks ago. In your package, you all received a copy of the Governor's Executive Order that came down yesterday to move all schools in the state of Kentucky to virtual NTI learning beginning November 23rd. Now, our school system already had plans to do two days of NTI on November 23rd and 24th. It was a way for us to work with our students if any students were behind on assignments or any work activities that they needed to complete. Also, our schools would have the opportunity to reach out and make contacts with all our students and families that weren't necessarily in-person, and also the ones that were in-person. The executive order changed what we were doing, because we will continue on the NTI path on November 30th, when we return from Thanksgiving. And the order stated that that NTI process would continue through January the 4th. There is one possible exception to that with our elementary students. If Krishney County were to turn orange on the state incidents map for the required amount of time, there would be the possibility that we could bring elementary students back. That's a very outside possibility, but I think you all need to know that that option may be out there, but it's going to depend totally on the incidence rate. So with that being said, we made the swift move to looking at our NTI plan, and Jessica Addison has presented the NTI plan to you earlier this year, because before school ever started, we worked hard to have many tools, whatever our instruction was to look like. So we are ready to make that move to NTI, and I want to talk to you a little bit about some of the things that happened after the executive order was issued yesterday afternoon. We were actually watching the governor as a leadership team. Mr. Lackey was with us during that press conference yesterday afternoon. And when we heard what our changes were going to be, we immediately went into a leadership meeting yesterday afternoon in the boardroom and started plotting out what we needed to do to make a successful transition for our students and basically make a plan for today. By 8 o'clock this morning, we had all of the directors in the boardroom going over what we needed to do in every area, from attendance to technology to food service to transportation, so we could give our principals the best possible information and make this transition as easy as possible. By 11 o'clock today, we had all of our building-level leaders and our NTI contacts from the schools at the PAC, and we were going over what administrative changes they needed to have, what operational changes needed to occur, and what instructional changes needed to occur. So our schools are on target. Our elementary schools are in session tomorrow, and they're getting materials ready and plans ready for their students. Our middle and high schools were in session today, and they have been hybrid, so they are ready to transition as well to the NTI. So that's what our last 24 hours have looked like. It's been very fast and furious, but we had a good plan in place, and that makes that work much easier. So what will happen? We will go with NTI on the 23rd and 24th as planned. On November 30th, we will continue that NTI with employees working onsite within their buildings. We're very intentional to provide student support. That was a big part of this plan. Some of that student support will look like our nurses. They will continue working within the buildings, and our district nursing staff will continue doing well chat visits with all of our COVID-positive employees and students. That's been a big part of what's happened in the school system so far, just checking to make sure they're okay, if they need anything, if they're recovering well. Another piece to that will be our school-based therapists, and they will continue working with their caseloads within the buildings. They'll either do that through phone calls, emails, Zoom meetings, and home visits. So that's an important part of what we do every day, as well as our family resource and youth centers. They will be reaching out to families and working with families. It seems like there's a lot of need around the holiday season, and our students will not be in front of us in the same way that they have in the past. So there is a plan for them to keep working with our students. And the final piece to that puzzle I'm going to talk about tonight is our SWAT team process. And each school will have a SWAT team, and that stands for Student Support While at Home Team. What will happen with our schools is, there will be a bus on standby for every school, and if we are not having good contact with our students, if students aren't completing assignments, if we need to do a wellness check because we haven't had contact, a team from the school will actually go out to the home and assess and try to help the children. Also, if they cannot get work at their home, they may even carry work to them and that sort of thing. So I think that the student support pieces are a huge part of the plan we have moving forward. That is the major part of the plan. I will tell you, you all have a new copy of the NTI plan, and you have a one-page summary of the NTI plan as well. And on the back of that one-page summary, there are highlighted points that each one of our directors went over today when they met with our school-level leaders. One of our other directors, Coach Stovall, also spoke today, and I believe he sent each one of you an email about the status of extracurricular activities. I spoke with him this afternoon, and he said, "Fully expect the information he sent you to change." So he said he would keep you updated. When he heard about changes, he would let you all know. But what it looks like right now is, there's no after-school activities other than football until November 30th. The football teams will continue to practice. Both of our teams are currently in the playoffs, so they will practice until the conclusion of their season. On December 14th, that is the first day of full practice for winter sports, band, choir, dance, and cheerleading. And on January 1st, that's the anticipated first date. And on January 1st, that's the anticipated first date for competition. But as I said earlier, that is likely to change or some pieces of this plan is likely to change. And he said he would keep everybody updated as far as what those changes look like. As far as tonight, we also felt like we needed to bring you a technology update of the work that had happened within our district. And let me tell you, over the last month, really more than a month, a lot of work has gone into our technology plan. And Mr. Wilson is going to come up and share our technology plan at this time.
Good evening. I'm going to share with you guys just kind of a brief update on where we are with technology. So we did receive, I believe, the last week of October, right before Halloween, we received our devices that we had ordered for the high school students. So we began and rolled out the plan to pass out devices to our in-person students at the high schools and middle schools. To date, we've passed out, a little over, in the last two weeks, we've passed out a little over 2,500 devices. Tomorrow, we have a pass-out day at County High and County and Hop Town High for the VLA students at the middle school and high school. So County will come to County High, Hop Towns will go to Hop Town High. And we anticipate, we have roughly 800 devices to pass out tomorrow between the two buildings. So in about a 15-day period, we'll have passed out over 3,500 devices. And that's a, that's a no-small task. I have a great team who's worked really hard to make this happen. In addition to passing out those devices, we have also taken and we have collected and moved around roughly 1,400 devices to elementary schools to try to get them back up to speed after we took devices from the elementary school to help give to VLA students when we started the year with VLA students. Those devices came out of the high schools and middle schools when we got devices in for them. We are still waiting on 1,250 devices that will be here sometime after the first of the year. It's just that that was a second order that we placed and just when it was said and done, it's pushed to now, we're going to get those after the first of the year. That doesn't hurt us too bad. It doesn't put it where we're quite 1 to 1K through 12, but once those devices come in, we will be. We've been able to start utilizing old laptops that are not usable as Windows laptops because they're too old, they're too slow, they won't update anymore. We've been able to turn those into Chromebooks, so we've been using those for VLA students to repurpose those. Typically, those would be devices that we would surplus out and recycle off, but we've been able to turn those into Chromebooks. So my team's been working to do that, to try to provide more devices in the hands of our students. That's worked out real well. We've also got 36 hotspots around the county. That map is on the front page of our school district's website. Right underneath our picture that says CCPS, there's a button that says CCPS hotspots and you pull that up, that map is live. The green dots are the green markers on there are the, are the spots that are hot and up going. The red ones are the ones that have not been activated yet and there are only, there's only one site that is not active yet. We have 35 of the 36 sites up and going. And the 36 site will be up and going tomorrow morning, once we're able to get out there and get that installed and get that online. So we've been busy and we, as has everybody else, and I feel like we are in a good spot moving forward. And I feel like as we move through this even more, we're positioning ourselves in years to come where our students are on the same playing field as counties surrounding us that have done this years ago. And it's been nice to, to work with administration and the staff and a team that's willing to put the effort in to do this. And it's going to put our kids in a spot where, where they can compete with everybody. Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to commend you and your team for what you've done. You know, that's, it's very commendable. Is there any way that we know the usage of the, of the hotspots? Do we know how many people have connected to them? Do we know when the prime? Any way, do we get feedback? Do we, do we have them in the right spots? That's, you know?
So the way, we have an outdoor access point on every school building that we own in the district. So those are tied into our network just like here in this building, here in this office. It's, they're, they're just an extension of what we have here at school. So for those, we don't necessarily have any special data usage on those because they're just kind of tied in with everything else. Now, we have 18 hotspots that we worked with.
Volunteer fire departments?
Judge Execs, Steve Tribble. He had Randy Graham reach out to me and we worked with Mr. Graham and we worked with Mayor Lynch to put five in the, within the city limits and the rest of them are at the volunteer fire departments. And so I can pull usage reports and what I, what I can see is typically when I look at the report, it's a rolling seven-day average. And so that fluctuates a lot. If I go total usage, there are several of our hotspots within the city. For instance, we have one at Joe Mufford Park down here off of Knight Street.
Wood Mill.
And that one has had over 6 gig of data usage, you know, in a very short period of time. So that tells me there's people there using those. Some of the ones that are in the outlying areas of the county at the volunteer fire departments aren't getting as much use. But the thing is, at those, people, it's intentional for people to go there on those. They're going to have to, typically they're going to have to drive there. Whereas some of the ones we have in town, for instance, we have at several of the Housing Authority locations. So those people are able to access those without necessarily leaving their house because of where we position those. So those tend to get more use than the ones out in the county, but they are being used.
I'm sure that it will increase once we go full NTI.
Correct. And now that, and now that everyone, now that all of our students will be at home needing to access that, I, I do anticipate that, the use of those going up.
Mr. Wilson, do you have an idea of what the percentage of the students that took out the insurance policies are?
I don't yet because they can still purchase insurance on those up until tomorrow. And so the way that works is I don't see any of that until after it's done and the insurance company sends me the list. That's intentional so that I don't, we don't handle any money, we're not, we don't have anything to do with it. And I get a list and that goes through tomorrow. So I will, I won't get that until next week. And so at that point, I'll know, know where we're at. And I've, I've talked about, I've had, I've had some questions about that. And this year, for the way we had to go about doing this, where it was going to be mid-year within a, within a timeframe, this I felt like was the best way for our students to have an option to protect the devices they have moving forward. I do believe that going into next year, now that we've been in this and we kind of see that we need to look at, you know, implementing possibly a technology fee and then that will then be, allow us to, to bulk purchase that for everybody and look at that moving forward. But I'll, I'll have those numbers beginning next week, once, once that settles out tomorrow.
What's the range on some of these? I mean, is it a mile just from being able to pick up the Wi-Fi?
So, no, I mean, this is, these are just like, this is, they're not, they're not cellphone antennas that have miles of radius. They're, they're like an, an access point. Now, we did purchase external antennas for those. So I do have, I could probably go, they'd probably go close to 700 to 1,000 feet out from a building. But that's going to depend on a lot of factors. You're going to, the, the ones that are out in the county are cellphone, they do run off cellphone reception. And so if it's a cloudy day or if there are trees within the line of sight, if the wind's blowing just right and you get, you know, movement back and forth, there's a lot of things that'll, that factor into that. But I have to say that we have been very impressed with the speeds that we're able to get using cellphone data. And we're getting speeds faster than probably some people in this room have at their house that are running, you know, AT&amp;T DSL-type service. And so the quality of service we're able to put out there's been good. Another thing to note on those is it is filtered internet. So, you know, even though it's an open Wi-Fi hotspot where anybody can go up there and it'll say CCPS Wi-Fi, you can connect to it. But we're filtering out, it's mainly for school. You're not going to get to thing, you can't stream Netflix using it. You can't get on Instagram using it. You can't do certain things like that, that, you know, somebody might want to just go and sit. So it's eliminating some of the things that might get people in trouble. It's, it's, we have it set up strictly mainly for school use.
My question is, we have the sec, we have the high school and the middle schools that are dealing on a, you know, with the internet, you know, because they're on hybrid. And then we had the VLA who's dealing with devices. How do we prioritize those who've been in a traditional setting in the elementary school system? Who gets the, who gets the device? Is it based on equity? Is it based on how they're doing their grades? You know, because we don't have enough for everybody. How do we determine those in elementary school?
So the plan, the plan has, was never to send devices back and forth to and from with elementary students on a regular basis. Given the circumstances that we're in now with the executive order, I met with the elementary school principals. Tuesday, we talked about it, anticipating something might happen, and then this morning we talked even more. We've set up processes at each school for families that are in need of a device, that they can get those devices through the school, through a checkout process. And it's going to be very similar to the devices we've passed out that middle school and high school kids are getting to take back and forth home with them. They'll be able to check those out through the school. And our teachers and, and our administrators have been working to kind of pinpoint and identify families that have internet access, families that have device access, families that may have internet access and no device access, and vice versa, so that we, so that we know the need. And our goal, as I told our, our principals this morning, we have devices now, but a device alone's not going to fix our, our issue. We live in a, we still live in a very rural county and we have lots of parts of this county that don't have high-speed internet. And that's what we did with the, the Wi-Fi and hotspot areas that we put up. And so our families, if they, if a device is what they need to get them over that barrier, we'll eliminate that barrier. But if families don't have internet access, giving them a device doesn't fix that problem. Now, if they are willing to go and we can get them, we have places for them to go if they're willing to do that and they're saying, yeah, we need a device, then yes, we're going to meet those needs and we're going to, we're going to pass those out. And the schools have those devices and that process is in place for them.
So, okay. So the school identifies the barriers and then?
Yeah, they, that's him.
So it's not a parent raising their hand, the school's identifying?
Yes. And it, and so if parents, if parents have a need for that, they can talk to and reach out to the schools and, and we can help eliminate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilson? Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
And thank your team.
Yes.
All right. In conclusion with this presentation item, I just want to say, I want to applaud the administrators, the directors, the central office staff for the work over the last 24 hours. We met for three hours with building level principals this morning and, and I think we vetted out all the problems. We're postured now. I think our high schools and middle schools are in a good place with the devices, with the Canvas platform, and they've been doing it for a while. And I think we're ready. Our elementary schools, like Mr. Bell had asked, we've vetted those parents, families that need support, will remove those barriers. And we also have means of delivering instruction without devices to remind, through Dojo, through the QR codes. They're going to use a lot of multitude events of, of resources to make that happen in elementary or through a hard packet. We have that option as well. And our teachers have identified how each student will learn at home. For example, Milbrook Elementary did the exact same thing. Those that needed devices took them home, those that did not, worked out, getting the work through accommodations, through other means. Our elementary's are ready. I think our students will be ready. I want to assure you that this is not the pandemic NTI that we went through in March or the way we started the school. We are expecting our students to work and get the work done, period. And we'll there, be there to support them, to intervene if there's a problem, an issue, to accommodate, to cheerlead for them. But from November 30th through December 18th, we, we cannot lose ground. We want to hold our ground, hold our posture where we are, so we continue on when in-person learning backs up, backs into play. So I'm encouraging principals to talk to students, to talk to parents. We're going to support parents with effort or any kind of barrier or anything, anything that would prevent them from getting work done. So we want to make sure that our students are getting the work done over these next 17 days. With the Virtual Learning Academy at the district level, there'll be, will be no change to what they're doing. They're proceeding forward and, and doing their thing. And I believe that we're ready and I believe our team is ready to support from central office at the school level. And we're, we're ready to hold our ground because we want to get back to school when it's safe, when it's, when it's, the time is right to get back to in-person instruction because that's what we value in Christian County Public Schools. Now, if there are any questions about the overall presentation with Ms. Morris, Mr. Wilson, or myself, or athletic questions, we'll take them at this time.
So parents will be able, parents and students will be able to get in touch with teachers?
Eight to three.
Every day?
Yes, ma'am.
With, with issues and whatnot?
And we have extended hours as well. We have a hotline for each school set up. They'll either be working with the hotline, phone, cellphone from the school or patch their phone into their cellphone from work, or they'll be at the school from 3 to 8 Monday through Thursday. 3 to 8 will be extended hours and the principals know the man that time for, they might not be able to answer an algebra III question or a physics or a chemistry question, but they'll get the information and give it back to them the next day. So, and we put that out today in a video about our plan. We have a press release we put out and the principals are communicating that out at the school level. But yeah, 8 to 3, Monday through Friday, and then the extended hours for support for parents after school are 3 to 8, whatever means, whatever phone number that the school will be using and putting that out. And it'll be, that'll be Monday through Thursday.
Any other questions?
Now, I guess every teacher's going to be required to be there. Am I correct in that?
Yes, sir.
And they are allowed to bring their children, is that correct?
If, if, yeah, the principals are setting up plans for that. And we have some procedures to follow with bringing school-aged children. It has to be school-aged. They have to remain in the room, they have to remain masked, they have to, you know, the principal has the right to monitor that and have a conversation if it's not going well. So yes, and that is a local decision. Every school is going to make that own decision. We've allowed our staff members to bring and accompany their children with them if necessary.
Will there come a time where we may look at letting them teach from home by any chance as far as making sure we get the building completely clean or?
We might. It depends on where our numbers go and what we're looking at. And it's just, it's just, now, we won't, let me back up to, we won't be meeting with teachers because of that 33% capacity. They'll go in their classrooms, they'll, they'll do their screener without large group meetings and they'll stay in their classroom from 8 to 3. Meetings will be held in less, five or less. And then if there's five or more, or more than five, they'll have to do a virtual meeting from their classroom. And then as the, as the situation progresses, we're going to continue monitoring data dashboard and we'll make adjustments as necessary. We feel it's, it's the right thing to do and support and have your team on campus. And by being in classrooms and not, not, not going above a five limit capacity for meetings, with Mr. Lackey's support and with what the guidance says, we felt it was a good move to make that decision.
Our neighbors to the west are doing the same thing.
Most districts, I think, are allowing, are wanting teachers to come in because that's the critical part to leveraging the work getting done by students and then communicating with admin if it's not getting done or district level people.
And then food services will continue with?
Correct. On tomorrow, we're handing out a nine-day pack from 11 to 1 at all schools. And then we're allowing elementary kids to take home a three-day pack on the buses so they can possibly get up to 12 days if they get, get the pack and then the students will take home a three-day pack. That'll be for next week. Then Monday, November 30th, we're starting it from 11 to 12. Will be daily food service Monday through Thursday. You get a two-day pack, breakfast and dinner. And then we have over 25 bus locations, satellite locations for drop-off across the county. We'll have that posted by early next week. It's the same process we did from the beginning of the year. It's the same process we did from the beginning of the year. So you'll have about 45 different places to pick up food.
Will we have any in-person tutoring?
Yes, good question. I forgot to mention that. We're allowed to bring in 15 students per, per two-hour block, is what the guidance says. So what we've allowed our schools to do from eight to three, we're gonna go eight to 10 for 15. 11 to one, or 11 to, or 10 to 12 for 15, and then 12 to two for 15. So you have three opportunities to bring in 15-minute, 15-group students, stop it off at 2:00. We'll have our buses on standby at every school, one bus, one driver every school, to pick up students, to drop off work, to drop off food, to go get a welfare check, to take out student, teachers or, or staff to intervene. So we, we have that capacity. And the high schools are doing that already with their virtual Fridays, and they're gonna continue that, that process over NTI. I'm sure the middle schools will pick that same plan up, and I'm sure the elementary school too, especially with any special ed service needs students or failing, failing students or need some assistance. So that'll be, that's in play as well.
Will there be any transportation for those tutored students?
That bus that's on campus. Yep. And then we can have up to Mike say, we're gonna do one bus, one driver. We're gonna do two shifts, eight to 11, 11 to two, but we can add more if he, if we want. Right now, we're gonna start with one bus, one driver. See how the, the usage goes. And it's kinda like a taxi service, a Uber, a big, a big yellow Uber is gonna be available for our, for our staff to go out and pick up or drop off or utilize whatever.
Awesome.
I mean, the, the, the key for the buses, it's, it's school transportation, it's school insurance, social distancing's a factor or not a factor on the bus. And that keeps our bus drivers working and engaged and employed.
True.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Benson, now how will the teachers, are they gonna be like in a, a normal day where a, a child has a question about an assignment or something? How will they communicate? Will it all, will it be online or?
There are several ways to communicate, by telephone, and we'll have a, an attendance clerk or a front office patching. And that, and that's something we need to look at, Mr. Wilson, for our phone services, it'll probably be overwhelmed over the next three weeks, starting with that, back with NTI, and we'll have to address that in the forehead, in the front end of that. But they can do email, they can do remind text, and you can reply on the remind text, you can do a phone call, you can do online.
Can you say a phone call that comes to the central office?
No, it can go right to the school and patch into the teacher from eight to three.
No, I mean, you're, we're not, the teacher's not gonna give their personal cell number?
No, he's a work, they have their own classroom phone, and they can patch into the classroom.
I got you.
So if I got, if I'm a teacher at County High and they call County High, I need to talk to Mr. Benson, so it stays teacher. Okay, hold on, I'll patch into his classroom. That's the, that's the great thing about being at school, is where we can access our teachers if we need them and, and work with them to remove any barriers for learning. So very, lots of ways to communicate in our, and they can do Facebook message, I, I've seen that before, you know. Send me, hey, I need, I need help on this question, can you get back to me and send me an email? Most of the time it's through remind, through phone call, or through an email.
Any other questions?
Some of the teachers anonymously reached out and said that they, they don't need to be there, they're not gonna be doing anything.
Yeah, they won't have anything to do.
They won't have anything to do.
I find that hard to understand.
We'll look into that concern and make sure they have plenty of, and I don't wanna make busy work. I just wanna make engaging and make sure that we're grading. We're gonna mandate two grades per week for November 30th through December 18th. We gotta figure out how we're gonna do our finals for our high schools, our midterm exams. We gotta have that process in place. We're gonna do some training, we're gonna do some conversations for reopening, for next phase, for after January 4th, whatever that looks like. We have to have about two or three plans for that, and we need teacher input on that. There'll be plenty to do. And, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll have, we have to do evaluations, we have to do, there's a lot to do. I don't wanna do busy work. And we, we may see where our principals are saying, hey, we can go from eight to 12 and adjust that way. That's not a problem. We're starting out with this plan, but it's always adjustable. COVID makes us think that way. You have to adjust as you move forward. So we may, we may adjust it if we see a need to, to lighten the load for teachers.
And some of the concern is their safety as well, but they're gonna-
They'll be in their classroom by themselves, and we're not gonna meet more than five. If we meet more than five, it'll be socially distanced. If there's more than five, it'll be a virtual meeting only. We put that guidance out today. And according to legal counsel and according to the state guidelines for this executive order, we were permitted to do so. And I just think that's what's best for kids in regards to communication, engagement, technology access, phone calls, parents concerned, you know, all the, you name it. It's, it's, teachers need to be on campus, and we can monitor them as well and help them if they have any questions.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Benson.
One more note, we are gonna, like I said about VLA, they're in classrooms. We're gonna spread those teachers out, because there's more than, I think there's more than 10 in a classroom right now working on district campuses. We're spreading that amount and doing that as well, moving over to other, other rooms. So there'll be more than five VLA teachers in a classroom as well, as they continue to work under this executive order. And if that was, maybe that was a question you got or concern you got. We haven't done that yet, it's just in the works. So they won't be in, in, hopefully, in jeopardy of being any, treated like anybody else, differently than anybody else.
The second, and then the second marking period's coming up, right?
Right.
So those students that are hybrid, can they go to VLA in third marking period? Are we gonna still allow that transition?
Yep, and vice versa. Now, it's, and we've not had any requests either way that I can think of, we haven't had hardly any requests. We've had some hardships, but that, that's already been open, we've had it open, and we've got very, I think people are settled on where they're at.
Okay.
We've had a couple hardships with Des or the, the young man from County Middle requested to go into VLA because of the medical situation he was at. That was in Memphis ICU, the athlete.
Yes, sir.
And we let him go into VLA, obviously. So hardships are always accepted, and we're moving them, so, but we haven't had a whole lot, either way.
I'm just looking at, you know, he has quite a few parents who made the choice for their children to come back to in-person. Now they're going to NTI, it's cold, so-
That could be that possibility.
I think you're gonna have a few that are gonna go to VLA and they're-
It's still early, yeah, it's still early.
Mr. Benson, if you could have your principals reach out to the teachers again and reassure them about not more than five in the meetings?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we put it out today.
Some are still concerned that they didn't know that, it wasn't told to them yet, so we wanna make sure-
And I doubt, to be honest, I doubt we'll have a lot of meetings, because we have to be teaching and accessible to our kids. So, and we, we are making the strict guidelines across the district, eight to three, and there's no many of that except for the extended hours. So we'll, we just came out the guidance today, so we probably haven't been communicated very thoroughly to our teachers yet, but we'll get that done.
Okay.
Mr. Morris and I and Mr. Hunt will make a note of that for tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And it's understandable, there's still some questions out there, because it's still 24 hours old.
Right, right. You know, all of a sudden, everybody's having to change again.
Right.
You know, so at least we, we do have a little time, and we were starting to prepare for it already.
Right.
Any other questions?
As far as our, being able to disinfect our buildings or whatever, we, we can work around our teachers and-
And we're still doing the nighttime disinfecting all the way to Christmas break. And we're gonna talk, we've already talked to McGee Pest Control for a two-week hiatus on Christmas break. And we'll, we'll continue sanitizing those buildings. And we have our custodial staff, will do their own sanitizing throughout the day, just like, and probably more time, I ask, because we don't have kids in the buildings to do excess and clean and, and visibly, visibly do the touch points and all that. So that shouldn't be any issues at all.
Any other questions?
Congratulations, buddy.
What a year. All right, our next update will be the Studer survey rollout.
Okay, this is, is kind of a step off to something else we've done, and I know you're very familiar with Studer. In the past four years, we've done a lot of Studer surveys. This is called, and you can reference the PowerPoint, you have the PowerPoint copied in your packet. This is called a Studer serv- survey rollout pulse check. And thanks to our relationship with Mrs. Annette Johnson and the Studer group, we were able to assess and ask some pointed questions of our stakeholders. And then we're poised and positioned now to go ahead and look at some processes and some things we can do to make our staff feel more comfortable, make our students feel more comfortable, make our parents feel more comfortable in what we're, we're doing and what we're asking our stakeholders to be a part of in Christian County Public Schools. It's a quick slide presentation, I'll go through it and we'll answer any questions. I will tell you that we've not had a lot of time to react and do anything major to hopefully improve the next pulse survey. Because we're not gonna just take data, use data to just have it. We're gonna make decisions and take steps in order to get better based upon the data. Data-driven decisions is what we're about. If you go to the next slide, what is a pulse check? Short-term, high-impact survey provides, just check for improvement. This was about reentry, this was about COVID, this was about what we were, we were doing for our staff. Four or five questions, what we're doing for our students and what we're doing for our parents. We administered it in the month of October, the last week, and I, and we're gonna do it again in January. Now, that date may be pushed back, depending on where we're at in the process of reentry, but we'll look at that and evaluate it. In the meantime, we wanna do some things in accordance with taking the data, making some decisions, and helping our three stakeholder groups feel better about reentry plans moving forward. We have all the data consigned, kind of organizing this PowerPoint, and we have some themes of engagement and of comments or concerns. The first, go ahead, next slide. The first stakeholder group was our employee engagement overall. And now, again, we were in-person elementaries, and we were in-person in the hybrid schedule for middle and high. And we kinda broke it down into three, three areas. Our elementary teachers, our middle and high secondary, and our VLA staff. I'm pleased with the results, you know, zero to five, you wanna, you wanna see a four. We're pretty close to that, but as a new superintendent through a pandemic in person, I'm okay with 3.89s and 3.9s. Top boxes are important to look at and see how many people raised you, and you can see we're almost at a, at a third in most of our top box areas. Again, we wanna shoot for higher, we wanna be in the 4.2s, 4.3s, and that's the goal of taking the data and analyzing it and making adjustments as necessary. Next slide, this is our employees. Some themes that were expressed, and we'll address these. Cannot maintain social distance in classrooms or hallways, there's limited no ventilation in classrooms. The numbers in the county are on the rise, it's not the time to bring students back full-time. That was mostly a secondary conversation or comment. And a lot of these have been addressed through our actions already. You know, we had talked about bringing middle school back, and we backed up and punted because we knew we couldn't do it. Well, that survey was done before we backed up and punted. So we addressed that intentionally by the board making the decision, and I myself made the decision with district leadership team not to go back full with our, with our middle school. The last ones, a frequent concern, they wanna see clean happening by custodians. Optics perceptions are important. Just because we say we're clean, are we clean? I think the, the visual of seeing custodians out, doing touch points, sanitizing rooms with that spray gun are important. And you can read through, I'm not gonna read all the, all the trend comments of the engagements. There is some, always gonna be some concern when you're looking at middle and high, and when, when the time is right to go from hybrid to full-on in-person because of the number of kids, the size of those schools. And we're gonna have to develop a team, and we've had that in place already, to meet with our secondary teachers and say, okay, what is gonna be a safe way to, to make this transition? Because we can't stay in hybrid forever. The timing is important, but we wanna get teacher input for that process. Next slide, this continues with employment engagement themes. Communication is important. They think, they, their comments were, which is lack of understanding about the data dashboards. We've set up meetings to go out and talk to schools and their, their staff about the data dashboard and what it means. A lot of comments about why we don't, why we're not reporting contacts outside of school. We're not required to, they don't want us to, we wanna monitor what's inside of school. Now our staff and our principals monitor that, because it's important for lack of instruction or missing work or staff members that are not available because of outside-of-school close contacts, but we're not required to report it. And so that's what we don't do. There's a, there's some VLA students returned at the end of the nine weeks. We had a large influx of VLA returning, and that was hard on our teachers, but that was best for kids if they wanted to make the decision. So there was concerns about that, some difficulty with Canvas, and again, you can read through those. And then some of those are very natural, like keep up with the pacing guide when we're already behind with the hybrid schedule. Learning new Canvas model, module. And then how our staff are contacted, contracted or contract traced if exposed, and how the quarantines work. A lot of staff members think we quarantine people. We have not quarantined a single person in Christian County Public Schools. The Health Department quarantines people. We contact trace, we support, we give names for the staff, and then the Health Department follows up, interviews and does the same thing, and kinda reiterates what we've already done and verifies it and then quarantines. So that, that process just needs to be communicated better and more intentionally. Next slide, this is a student engagement survey. I feel safe, I'm doing my schoolwork, 4.15, and then, go ahead, Mr. Bell.
When you say students, what students and how many?
Total number, I can't give you that number, I can get back to you on that. I can't remember what it was. It's a, it's K through 12.
These high school students, middle school students?
It's all students.
All students?
Yeah, it wasn't broken down into schools or by, by grade levels.
K through 12?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know, do you know, am I on the number? Do you know the number, Lauren? I thought it was about 3,000. But it was, there was no breakout of, on these poll surveys, there, there was no breakout of school data, like this is County High, this is hot, County High teachers.
You said 3,000 out of eight?
Yeah. And that, we didn't break down by grade level.
That's about 40%.
We did the push as much as we could, and it was difficult because of, you know, COVID, obviously, and hybrid.
Now, does this include the VLA students?
Yes, they participated, yes. It's all student has had access to this. And VLA teachers push this out on their electronic platform.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know how many, because that wasn't included in our data rollout process. Um, but you can see that, that there's some good numbers there, there's some numbers that need some support. I feel like I'm learning and making progress in my schoolwork, 3.73. I am connected to my school friends, 3.79. I'm ready to learn each day, 3.69. So overall, there are some areas of improvement, definitely. Next slide. First bullet just rang true to me on that slide, want and need face-to-face instruction. That was the overwhelming comment on the statements from students. That was a trending comment, they wanna have face-to-face instruction. Unfortunately, that's not possible right now, so we know that we have a, a need to fill when they get back, when we do return in person. Need some help with reliable computers. Now, that, that survey was done before the devices were handed out, so I think we fixed that problem already. And then just more teacher interaction when not in school through Zoom meetings, need more hands-on. What are, what I think our students are asking, is they wanna be back in school with teachers. And that's, that's reassuring, but we have to be safe and we have to be mindful, we put it the right way. Next slide, parents, again, there's no breakdown of, of K through 12 or of what school they came from. It was a lumped data point, and you can see the count. I can't see it from here, but I don't know the total number without counting them up.
About 14, 1,400, 1,465 or so.
Okay. And I think numbers are, again, about like the rest of them. I am confident that my child will not fall behind in school. That's, that's a nationwide trend of this poll survey. Most of them were, there were some districts we were told that were below 2.0 on that. We're in the mid-range, but we have work to do to build our parent confidence up, and we have to address these. I am confident my child's school is handling the COVID challenge to the best of their ability, keeping him safe. I like to see that in the 4.0s, but that's just more communication, more work on that process. I have the resources to help my child learn. That was before Chromebooks, so hopefully that'll change a little bit. I have access to my child's teacher, 3.9, that's, that's, needs to be above four. All of these need to try to get above four. Top boxes were, you know, 25%. Top boxes strongly agree when they check the strongly agree. So we're still above 25% in most areas. Next slide, parent satisfaction themes. We heard a lot of good things as far as positive feedback, we don't stress that as much, because that's not how to get better. Mixed views on face-to-face or hybrid, prefer hybrid because of COVID, but wish to go daily. Lot of instructional feedback. They wanna, they want our kids in class, they want them learning, they want them safe, and I, I want, we all want it too. But I think overall, they said that we're doing the best we can in light of the situation. Again, there was, needed some clarity on the dashboard, because they may have a child who's got a test positive or who was in close contact, but because it wasn't school-wide or in school, we're not reporting that, and I think that's just needs to be a communication effort on our part. The bottom one, no mask breaks, we're gonna get better at that, we just need to be more intentional with mask breaks. But these are all the themes in regards to parent satisfaction for what we're doing, and we'll address those. Now that we're past this switch in what we're doing, we, we need to have- Now that we're past this switch in what we're doing, we need to have time to address some of these and do some video work, some adjustments, some communication techniques, some training on the COVID dashboard or whatever we need to do to adjust these before the next survey rollout.
Will we, would we be able to do a better job with the infinite campus and the canvas as far as keeping?
Yeah, we've already adjusted, we've already adjusted that as far as I'm concerned, as far as I've heard. They weren't syncing in and they were dropping. Yeah, we've, I think we've taken care of that. I'm 99% sure that's already been adjusted through our instructional department.
Thank you.
Melanie, did you hear that same thing through what Katie and you guys were doing? Yeah, yeah, I think that's fixed.
Okay, thank you.
It just wasn't syncing up and Canvas was dropping a lot of the grades. It wasn't throwing them in for campus. We just separated it.
Sometimes it was good and sometimes it was not.
It's supposed to be a sync, so when you put it in Canvas, it goes right to infinite campus. It wasn't working the way they had advertised.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide. So, more trends. They need more communication from their individual teacher about child's learning. Grades are not posted, grades are inconsistent. Struggling with this virtual learning process. And Chromebooks, they need more Chromebooks. Well, we think we fixed that. Virtual platform is not instructional, it's more only assignments. We hope we can fix that. Our VLA is going to more videotape lessons and more virtual meetings. So, we're already addressing some of these things, but we have some more to get done for sure. And that'll be the work over the next month and a half until the next poll survey, probably end of January. Next slide. And that's the conclusion of the three stakeholder surveys. Just wanted to share that information with you. It's not an easy time to take a survey when we're in this pandemic, but we wanted to get assessed where our stakeholders are and what they think of us and how the job we're doing. And we'll definitely use it to make our district better in all three phases. Any questions?
Just thank you for what you and your staff are doing. Not the ideal first-year superintendent job, is it?
Not really, no, but it's all right. All right, so we'll continue on, Ms. Keller.
Next item is the, that's okay.
I just stand up the whole time.
You're just going to keep on rolling anyway. This is item number four is the finance update with Mr. Bensel and Ms. Darnell.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Bensel, Mr. Lackey. Tonight, we're beginning a process of not just having a report in the back of your monthly packet, but actually having a discussion about our monthly financial status of Christian County Schools and any kind of updates or information that I have from state or federal guidelines or anything like that. So, the sheet in your packet tonight is our monthly treasurer's report that you will get every month now. Shows our balances, receipts, expenditures of each fund of the district. I'll just go through the different types of funds, what we have. We have our general fund. It's our main operating account for the district. So, all of our instruction, maintenance, transportation, administration comes out of that general fund. Our special revenue fund is all our state and federal grants. District activity funds, accounts for each school that's set forth by KDE for donations, fees, fundraising, et cetera. School activity funds also set forth by the Red Book regulations, which are now part of our district financials. Instead of having a school account at each school, they are encompassed in our school, our district account. Our capital outlay fund, which is our $100 per ADA that's restricted for facilities or debt service on facility projects. Our building fund, that's the original FSPK nickel from our property tax with our equalization dollars from the state. Also restricted for facilities or debt service on facility projects. Our construction fund, which is where we house all of our currently ongoing facility projects based on things that you have approved recently. Our South Christian roof project will go in there, the secure entryways, projects that we are finishing up. Our debt service fund is where all our bond payments go for the district. School food service, all operating costs for the food service program, and our daycare fund, which is all of our revenue and operating costs for the before and after care centers at every elementary school. As we look at the month of October for the general fund, you can see our beginning balance, October 1, was $6.2 million. Our receipts for the month, $3.2 million, which mostly is our SIC funding. Payroll for the month, $3.5 million. Accounts payable, which is all our other bills that are not payrolls, which is utilities, supplies, books, fuel, those types of things, $706,000. A fund transfer, which is an incoming flow in our general fund. That's our food service indirect cost monthly payment from our food service over into the general fund. And the interest income on our checking account for the month of October was $9,603. In comparison, looking to October of 2019 for the general fund, we are down in revenue due to the delay for the tax collection, but we've already seen that we will have an increase in comparing November to last November because it was just delayed a couple of weeks on the collection. So, at the end of the year, you know, that will be stabilized and balanced out. Expenditures as compared to October of 2019 for general fund only, we have spent $342,000 less this year than in the prior year. The majority of that decrease was noted to be in our transportation area. We have less buses, rollings, we have less fuel costs and less expenditures, no field trips, very change in athletic trips as well. So, that's the main difference for our expenditures as compared to the prior year. The bottom section of the report shows the reconciliation to our actual cash balances with the bank, a breakdown of our bank accounts with our main account, debt account, construction accounts, and then project graduation certificates of deposit. Are there any questions on this sheet? This is the sheet you'll see each month now moving forward. We'll go through the balances for this each month. A couple of updates that I have as far as finance goes for the district. You all may have heard of the 8% budget reduction that Kentucky Department of Education was trying to go through as requested by the governor's office. Has, they have said they will not be asking for that 8% mid-year reduction. So, that's good news for us. We're not expecting any mid-year reductions now on our grant funding. SIC was not going to be, SIC was going to be exempted from that anyway. But, so we were worried about some of our state grant funds, but now that 8% budget reduction, they have said at the state level that with their CARES funding and their revenues coming in, they will not be asking for that mid-year cut. But as you all know, General Assembly will start meeting in the spring because they only passed a one-year budget for this year. So, we will be looking at another budget cycle coming up through General Assembly in the spring for our next year budget. So, we'll be watching to see what we have come out for that.
Jessica?
Yes.
Just one question on debt service. Is the fourth line over the annual debt service?
I'm sorry?
The fourth column over the debt service line, is that the, is that the annual debt? Actual debt service payment?
One of them.
Okay.
That fund accumulates, if you'll remember when we did our bonds for county middle. That fund accumulates as a sinking fund account. So, we have paid money in that will pay for those bonds over a period of 20 years. So, it's kind of like a savings account, the sinking fund for that. So, we accumulate what looks to be a really high cash balance in that account, but that is the sinking fund portion of that because it will.
Right, that was kind of what I was getting to, is that money is, looks like it's there, and it's not really there. Right.
Right, it's not ours to spend on anything. It is held as a savings sinking fund for those future bond payments. Right.
When are our next bond payments? When's the next one being paid off? 2023?
We have one at the end of this year, I think, and then another one, one, I think, for the next three years. That county middle bond, we will stop making payments into the sinking fund in 2025. That cash will stay in there and pay those bonds until the bond payment process is over with, but we will no longer make deposits into that account at that time. So, we have two or three over the next until 2025.
I thought there were several that will help our bonding potential too here in the next few years.
Right. One other thing I'll update you on is our FEMA reimbursement process. I don't know, many of you may have, may or may not have heard about some changes that FEMA has come out with in the guidance regarding reimbursement for school districts for expenditures due to COVID-19. We are no longer guaranteed a 75% reimbursement on the majority of our expenditures for COVID-19. There was a change in the guidance from the federal level that came down to the state level that has now been passed on to districts. That school districts and the services that we provide are not emergency in nature. And so, several of our expenditures are no longer eligible for FEMA reimbursement. We do have some options because we have been in-person traditional instruction model for a few weeks. And so, basically, we're going back to the drawing board in finance and going back to look at our timeline, when we started school in-person, when we had some disinfection starting, and going back to see what will be eligible. So, we're not giving up, but a lot of the things that we were told in the beginning that we would get reimbursed for, we may not. So, I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that change. The original guidance coming from FEMA was very, very broad when it first came out in March, April. And because of that, they have now narrowed that down to target more healthcare emergency services rather than education. So, like I said, we're hopeful that we can go back through and see what we can find and submit in to FEMA and see what we can get back. But the original concept we were working off of is no more.
So, it's, to them, it's not an emergency, but yet they're shutting us down because it is an emergency?
To them, it is not an emergency for, because we're not providing a healthcare emergency service to children.
Despite, despite the fact that every district in the state was encouraged.
To spend that money. Right.
Right. So, now they have.
Specifically encouraged.
So, what level do we have to take that to, to fight that?
Federal.
It's a federal, it's a fed decision.
Federal. So, we've been encouraged to possibly use CARES funding instead of FEMA. The way that FEMA has explained it is that FEMA is emergency response money. It is supposed to be a last resort funding source. So, we've, we've been encouraged to show our plans because our CARES funding grants are two-year grants. So, if we have a two-year plan for our two-year grant, obviously, we're not going to spend that money first and then ask for FEMA. So, so that's another part of the plan that I will be resubmitting to them is to show them that we have a plan for our CARES money. We have to have it for the second year for sustainability and that we will not be spending that money before we request the FEMA money. So, I've talked twice to our FEMA representative and his, to his supervisor to make sure that we can get in as much as we can get in and get the right roadmap that we need to follow to get what we can get. So, we'll be working on, on that. Our audit report, last thing on my monthly report. The audit report was given an extension. Normally, they're due November 15th, but because we did have CARES funding and some of the federal guidance from the CARES Act was not released yet, they have extended our deadline to December 15th. I do have a draft copy of the audit report and some preliminary findings. They're the best we've had in our school activity findings. In the 10 years that I have been here district-wide, we are looking at three audit findings for our school activity funds. So, I'll end my report on a high note and say that I'm very proud of our bookkeepers and our school staff and the dedication that they've had to make sure that any audit findings that they've had in the past have been, have been corrected and we're moving forward. And I'm very proud of them, so. But we will have the full report of our audit hopefully in December.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Darnell?
Ms. Darnell, on the Fund One Financial Report. Business Support Services. This year over la, I don't know what page. I don't see a page on here.
I'm with you.
It would be in section 1311.
Which, which section are you looking at?
The Fund One Financial Report. Business Support Services.
Yes. Business Support Services are my department, finance, personnel, technology, the operational support divisions here at Central Office that support schools. That's what that grouping includes.
What, it's quite an expensive, this year over, over last, is that correct?
It's $81,000 less or more this year than last year.
More this year.
The things that also are included in that are, you know, insurance payments. So, workers' comp is included in that. So, if we have fluctuations in those types of expenditures, they're included in that group too. So, it's not just personnel and staff. It's district-wide expenditures that are also included in that grouping. I can go back and look in more detail to see where that increase came from, if you would like.
No, I think, what about the instructional staff support? The call, the third one down.
Instructional staff support? That depends on how we have classified some salaries. We have moved some people around whereas they were coded differently than last year. So, when I look at those numbers, I look at instruction in that top line, which was decreased, and instructional staff support in that third line. And you can see that that's a little bit of a wash right there because we had some reclassification moving around of salaries within the general fund.
I'm sure it's because of the Virtual Learning Academy too.
Right.
We got to add some positions and instructional support to that. Our principal, some retired staff have come back to help us out through the transition of version.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Darnell.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation will be the Next Generation Superintendent Effectiveness Standards. Standard number three.
And just to go back to the finance, that'll be a monthly briefing. Sometimes it'll be a little longer than others, but we'll always have that document to show you our monthly expenditures, where we are budget-wise, and then explain any updates with FEMA, audit report, anything that's, if it's finance is the name of the game now moving forward, and we have to make sure our finances are transparently communicated and in alignment with what we want to do. With this, this is the general continuation of the capstone project. We're on standard three out of, I believe, seven. Cultural leadership. You have that document, and like I said, we'll be briefing you up on this each regular scheduled board meeting so we can get to the end of this, end of the year for my capstone evaluation. You'll have some type of working knowledge of each seven, each of the seven standards and then what artifacts we're submitting, I'm submitting in our capstone. Standard three, cultural leadership. The summary of the standard, the superintendent understands and acts in the important role a system's culture has in the exemplary performance of all schools. He or she works to understand the people in the district and community as well as their history and traditions as they move forward to support and achieve district goals. The superintendent must be able to improve the district culture if needed to align the work of adults with the district's goal of improving student learning and infusing the work with passion, meaning, and. with the district's goal of improving student learning and infusing the work with passion, meaning, and purpose. Um, and I think some artifacts we've used, I mean, the one I just showed you tonight, the poll survey, looking at what our district feels are necessary changes to make in regards to reentry and what their feedback needs to, what feedback we receive and how we react to it. We are in the process, Ms. Keller's on that committee of rebranding our mission, vision, and, and that's going very well. And we have, hopefully have a January push out of, of our new mission, vision. The, the vision and mission are behind Mr. Clark there, and we're rebranding and looking at that. And I think we've made some really good progress with all stakeholder input. Um, so that's one of our, our artifacts. Advisory councils are really critical. Um, I have four advisory councils, student, a staff, a pastoral, and a community. Um, I've had several pastoral advisory meetings. Um, I had a student one yesterday I had to cancel. Our staff one yesterday I had to cancel because of the governor's briefing. And I had, uh, I have one next week for students I have to postpone now. But they're in the works, and we'll get them in before um the end of the year. And there's just some other examples of, of what we've done so far to meet this standard. We'll continue this process of updating the board each month at the regularly scheduled board meeting on the uh capstone CASA evaluation process. And I'll take any questions. All right, thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much. Okay, the next presentation will be committee reports. Ms. Hayes, do you have any?
I have not yet.
Huh, okay. Where's Mr. Clark?
Uh, really don't have much of a detailed report. I did reach out to our representatives, and they said that the news was basically what the governor had put out yesterday. Um, Representative Dodgett said that he would be on the Education Committee starting the first of the year, so. That'll be a local representative that we should have um easy access to.
That's good. He's just right down the road.
That's right.
Mr. Bell?
Well, I had the opportunity to attend the racial education equity meeting on November 12th at the PAC. It was a very good meeting, very well attended. Um, um, basically, we, the district is in the process of developing a racial education equity plan uh that will look at diversity and equity in curriculum instruction and assessment within the school board, excuse me, excuse me, within the school system. Um, what I really uh would like to tell you guys about, um, they talked about, there's a lot they talked about. The part that stuck out to me was what they call trauma-informed schools where we have children um who come to school that have adverse child experiences, and that acronym is ACE. And children that come from certain demographics within our school, not just racial, but some are socioeconomic, deal with a myriad of adverse childhood experiences. Uh, most of the times when we talk about trauma, we're talking, we're talking about the military with PTSD. A lot of our children are coming to school with things that mirror, or maybe even be, may be worse than PTSD. Uh, some of these are children, uh, emotional and sexual abuse, substance abuse, domestic violence, homelessness, incarceration, divorce, physical and emotional neglect, poverty, discrimination, community disorder, disruption, lack of opportunity, poor housing, quality of affordability, and violence. And what the data shows that if we have children that show up to our school with four or more of these, that's why we might be having some of the problems that we're having as far as um graduation, um, them having adverse um behaviors, and also picking up some other behaviors such as um attempted suicide, premarital sex, um, health, alcohol, and things like this. So it's been very, uh, very, very enlightening. Um, I think it's very much needed, something that we do not need to pull back from, that we need to fully embrace, and I can't wait till this full report is given out. Also, uh, one thing that was very important, um, I've talked with Ms. Ford. She gave a presentation about the uh effort within the Christian County Public School as far as minority teacher recruitment and trying to have a grow our own program um starting uh in high school or even middle school. I remember um, um, Maxie Stamp's mother uh used to have a program at the Christian County Middle School called Stamps, uh, Selecting Teaching as My Profession for Middle School Students. So I have a Zoom meeting scheduled with Ms. Ford on Monday to talk about some of the efforts of for minority teacher recruitment and within the Christian County Public School System. Um, if you wanted to attend, our next meeting will be, I think it's December, December the 10th, I think, is our next meeting. December the 10th, uh, you're more than welcome to show up. Um, and it's a very good meeting, lasts an hour, and there's a lot of information.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Mr. Moore?
We were scheduled to meet this morning, but with some information that came down yesterday, we had to cancel our meeting just so we could have some other things that needed to be, have looked at a little harder. So.
Sounds, sounds fine. The, uh, I'm on the calendar committee, and we did meet, and we'll be having a presentation here shortly with Ms. Barrett on our calendar for the next coming year. And I guess that is it for everyone. All right. Next item is number five, discussion approval. The KETTS First Offer of Assistance in the Amount of $56,812 for the Education Technology Funding Program. Ms. Darnell?
Good evening again. This is an annual request for our general fund match for the KETTS program, which is a state technology grant. Uh, this is our first offer of assistance. Normally, we get about three each year. Um, it is based on a dollar amount per ADA for students. Um, it's a budgeted expense in our general fund budget every year, so we are expecting for, for this amount. Um, and this is how we fund the salaries for our technology department. If you have any questions?
Any questions at all? If not, do I have a motion to approve the KETTS First Offer of Assistance in the Amount of $56,812 for the Education Technology Funding Program?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Edwards, can you call the row?
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Darnell. Next item is the number six, discussion approval. The 2021-2022 School Year Calendar First Reading. Ms. Barrett?
Okay, good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Menzel, Mr. Lackey. Uh, we had our calendar committee meeting. I'd like to thank everyone that participated on that committee and took their personal time to come and meet with us. Ms. Keller was on that committee. Uh, we appreciate all their diligence, and also our community person was Angie Major that worked with us from the chamber. Um, as far as we want to go through here, and uh we would like to, this is your first reading, and the calendar now goes under two readings. This will be a review and appro, and approval of the first reading tonight. Uh, the, the calendar does meet Senate Bill 50 requirements of 1,062 hours, and in this calendar, we have 1,110 hours. That would be 385 instructional minutes per day. 173 instructional days are in, are in this calendar, and 170 instructional hours are required by the state. There are 185 contract days with one opening day, four PD required, four holidays, two growth days, and one closing day. And Karen, did you want to go ahead and flip up to the, to the calendar, and I'll go over while we? Okay, thank you. Okay, so as we go through the calendar and we look at the, the um, the dates and our start dates and things, if you, as you look at your calendar, you're going to see that August 10th is scheduled for opening day. August 11th would be the first day for students. After consultation with Michelle Ladd, August 23rd would be the first day with preschool students. On September the 6th, that would be Labor Day. That would be your first holiday of the required four. October 1st would be the first nine weeks ends. October 6th through 10th would be your scheduled fall break. October 11th, your nine, your second nine weeks would begin. On November the 1st, that would be our first growth day in the year. And that would be a time when they would go over instructional scores and things like that and talk about strategies. November 11th is Veterans Day. November 24th would be our first required professional development day. November 5th, our second holiday, Thanksgiving. November 26th, there would be no School of the Friday after Thanksgiving, which is normal protocol. On December the 17th, the second nine weeks ends. December 20th through the 31st would be our Christmas break days, which total, including weekends, would be 14 days. Now that we look at our se, coming up on our second semester, January 3rd, the fir, the third nine weeks would begin. January 17th is Martin Luther King Day, which is our third holiday, which cannot be used as a workday or professional development day or makeup day. On February the tw, on February 2022, February 18th would be our professional development day, uh, our second one. February 21st would be President's Day, and it's been designated as a holiday this year because normally our fourth holiday is January the 1st, and that falls on a weekend. So we had to come with, up with a fourth one, so we had to add that in as a holiday this year. Um, February 22nd would be a growth day. Uh, if we go on down through March, March 11th, our third nine weeks ends. March the 14th, our fourth nine weeks begins. March the 8th, the ACT tentative date after speaking with Mr. Hayes, um, is March the 8th. But we do ask, like we do each year, that if that date is changed, that we have the latitude to go ahead and change it on the calendar without bringing it back to the board. Uh, in April, April the 1st is our fir, third professional development day required. Uh, April the 4th through the 8th would be our spring break. April the 15th is our professional development day. Uh, that would be our fourth one. That is also Good Friday, which is something up against Easter weekend. As far as May, when we're looking at our testing window dates, it is required that testing windows identified on the calendar is the last 14 instructional days of the year, which will be May 5th through the 6th, May 9th through the 13th, the 16th, the 18th through the 20th, the 23rd through the 25th would be your 14 testing window days. As far as May the 17th, it's marked off the calendar because that's your primary local election year. On May the 25th, the fourth nine weeks ends. May the 26th would be your closing day. May the 30th is Memorial Day. It's shown on the, shown on the calendar. I know that school is already out, but I always like to go ahead and note that because we, I never know how it's going to end up at the end. May the 27th through the 28th, I just want to uh reiterate that the number of days in, must be equal to the greatest number of days missed in the last five, in the last five years. In 2015-16, we had nine instruct, nine we, weather days. So you'll see nine makeup days on the calendar at the end, which will be May 27th through the 28th will be your makeup days, June 1st through the 3rd, and 6th through the 9th. Your second reading on this calendar uh will be December 17th, 2020. I just want you to remember that inclement weather days could require amendments, as we've seen many times before, five and six times a year, I believe, at times. Uh, report card dates are listed on the calendar, and um, I just want you to look at it and review. And are there any questions? Ms. Keller, you have anything to add, being part of that calendar committee?
Uh, no, it's just it was unanimous uh with all the committee members that were there uh in agreement to uh, to the days that we had listed.
So graduations are 27?
Um, no, it would be.
We don't, we don't typically schedule graduation till March, but typically, that would be the day that I would ask that you would have it, would be on that Friday.
Would be that Friday.
That we always.
With no other days.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it just depends. We don't usually put it on here because you never know.
But it could be an anticipated day.
Anticipated.
Yeah. And, and we do have a little bit of the, with the extra instructional day and hours, we do have a little bit of time there built in to help offset that a little bit.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. All right. So if there are any other questions, do I have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 School Year Calendar First Readings?
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Edwards?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Next item is number seven, discussion approval. Permission to advertise for bids for mowing contracts for the calendar year 21. Mr. Hunt?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Menzel, Mr. Lackey. Uh, this is our year to work on renewing those and asking your permission to um advertise for bidding. Uh, we'll do that for about two and a half weeks. We have it set up to go through December the 9th. Um, this would be the close of bids. It'll be available here, online, and also all of our current vendors will receive notifications if they want to renew.
And it would be a three-year contract as long as performance is, is okay?
Performance evaluations are good.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Mr. Hunt? If not, do I have a motion to approve the permission to advertise for bids for mowing contracts for the calendar year 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Edwards?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item, number eight, discussion approval invoice from JKS Architecture in the amount of $13,093 for Christian County Bus Garage Reroof.
This is the uh reroof from the storm damage back in uh this past winter, and this, this will be covered by our insurance money here, so.
Any questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the invoice for JKS Architecture in the amount of $13,093 for Christian County Bus Garage Reroof?
So moved.
Any discussion? Ms. Edwards?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yeah.
Ms. Keller?
Yes. Motion carried. Number nine, discussion approval invoice from JKS Architecture in the amount of $650 for Gateway Secure Entry.
This should have been $950 to close out this bill, but it was billed at $650, so we'll have to pay this and then give them the other 300 when they bill that for us, so that would finish out. When they do that, I'll finish out that vestibule there.
Any questions? Not, do I have a motion to approve the invoice for JKS Architecture in the amount of $650 for Gateway Secure Entry?
So moved.
So.
Any discussion? Ms. Edwards?
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item, number 10, discussion approval invoice from JKS Architecture in the amount of $5,477.59 for South Christian Reroof Project.
This would um finish up the architect fee for the current, uh, this most recent job we've done at South Christian on the roofing there. This will be the last payment for that.
Any questions? Not, do I have a motion to approve the invoice for JKS Architecture in the amount of $5,477.59 for the South Christian Reroof Project?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Edwards?
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item, number 11, discussion approval invoice for JKS Architecture in the amount of $1,020 for the Alternative School Vestibule.
And this will be the final payment for our architect fee on that one as well. $1,020.
Any questions? Not, do I have a motion to approve the invoice for JKS Architecture in the amount of $1,020 for the Alternative School Vestibule?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Edwards?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item, number 12, discussion approval invoice for JKS Architecture in the amount of $49,351 for Christian County High School Reroof Project.
This would be the payment for the architecture fee on uh CCHS Reroof for the storm damage, so it's also under our insurance covered in that as well.
So this does not come out of our pocket in any way?
This is all insurance money.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Was there, what was unique about that reroofing that Christian County High School? Was it? Was it, did they have to put a slant roof back on or?
Well, the, the roofing that they use on that, you know, the rubber roofing, it had to be peeled back. And there was some decking work that had to be done in there, a lot of facial stuff in there. Uh, but I know Trevor could probably answer a lot more of that than I could, but there was damage inside the. Uh, but I know Trevor could probably answer a lot more that than I could, but there was damage inside the, uh, the- over the lobby area, the office areas. It was quite a bit that got damaged there that had to be repaired, other than just slapping the roof back down. It took a pretty good hit there on the- on the face part of it.
Any other questions?
But it did come in a little under the budget.
I think we talked- yeah, I believe we talked about it was under budget and, um, what we expected, uh, and we settled up with them too on some things where they went over.
Right.
And they did a few extra jobs for us, because they went over, they met us and fixed some scuppers and some things like that that they threw in for us. Getting charges for some of the labor.
Any other questions? Not, do I have a motion to approve the invoice for J K S Architecture in the amount of forty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars for Christian County High School Re-roof Project?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Edwards?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item is number thirteen, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I've got- what about on our Hop Town Hoppers, are we, um, they're still paying us the fee, or we're paying a fee to them for- now, we didn't have a season last year.
We met with them, and Mr. Hunt and I met with, uh, the general manager and Mr. Hunt to brief you on what we found out.
We didn't pay out last year with the season not happening, so it's- and- and really, it- it all levels out in what we pay them and what we get in return for that. Um, but yes, they- we didn't change any of the agreements. Uh, this was what was approved last year. It was supposed to be put in Christian County-
Booster clubs, I mean, do we have any id- any- what kind of numbers we're talking about based on the- the last year that we had it?
I- I don't have any in front of me right now, as far as- as far as what boosters made off of concessions. I- I do not know that right now. If I could find that out, because that will be one of our next steps, now that you approve this, and I'll go and advertise to see if booster clubs want it within the buildings. If no one else wants it, then it's- and default it to the local baseball program.
Another question would be the type of attendance that we've had the last years with the Hoppers, because basically what we're paying for is attendance. Is what our boosters are paying this fee for is attendance. If- is there still the enthusiasm in the community for the Hoppers that there was back in two thousand fifteen, I think?
I would say that it's probably more. In the pa- in- this past year, obviously, we didn't have it, and, um, I know for one, I've- I've been there at a lot of the games. I umpired a lot of the games, used to. Two years ago at Hop Town, the crowds were pretty large, uh, so it's- it's definitely- I don't- I can't speak to how many draws at Christian County. I mean, I- I've been to a couple of games over there. They spread out a little different, so it's harder to tell, but most of the folks gather around the bleacher area at Hop Town. It's- it's pretty well-packed. It's- it's one of the larger- and being around several of different venues in the league, umpiring those games and stuff that I used to do, that we had the largest attended crowds, other than probably Debois County times.
Well, they've got that nice fancy field.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's the league of their own that's down there.
That was nice.
It's going back to county this year. It's going-
Yeah, we're just- yeah, we're just- they, uh, Mr. Yacek talked with us, and he said because it- that was the plan last year, they didn't get to have a season, he thought it was fair, and they- they don't mind which field they play at, really. He said, "I think it's fair to leave it at Christian County this year. That way, if there was a booster club that really wanted to sell concessions, they could have it again," you know, and-
At one time, the concessions were significant.
Yeah.
I know. Starting out, they were, I think, my understanding.
I believe that at Hop Town, they had one group that chose to- that I- I think at that time it was a female group's turn, and they chose to do it, and I think they made a little money off of it, but, I mean, they- they- there's a lot of people lined up there to get concessions. It is- it's work. That's- that's the trouble that- it's not the money-making part of it, it's the fact it's a commitment of, um, you know, a thirty-game home stand, or home- home schedule, and you've got to have, you know, four to five workers there each night. And the same people, you know, obviously don't want to do it all the time, but-
And baseball games take forever, too. They're not like softball games. It takes an hour and ten minutes.
Fairly lengthy games.
How- how many- how many home games would an average season be for us at our facility?
About around twenty-five to thirty, depending on playoffs, how many they host in the playoffs, but they split their home and homes, you know, with the teams, so it's a-
I think in the contract, they would give us two hundred and fifty dollars a game.
It's, um-
But it would not go over six thousand dollars a year.
Right, yes.
So, you know, um, when you start getting over twenty-some games, then I guess we're paying the electricity for- free on this deal.
Uh, it- it can certainly look that way. I mean, I- it's about, you know, at- at two hundred and fifty dollars a game, but even out there, close to that six thousand dollar mark. Now, we do have things to-
So that would be, you know, like twenty-one or two games. If we go over that, then we're- I- I- I'm- hey, I'm all for the Hoppers. I go to a game every now and then and enjoy it, and it looks like the fans do, but if it's going to start coming out of our, you know, we've- we've got to look out for- we pay- we're paying the electricity on this way, I understand.
We're also paying- y- you know what goes into field maintenance. I mean, I- I can speak to that as a former baseball coach, and that's a big part of our careers, taking care of our field, and so we did have some conversation with that, because one of the things that the two local baseball high school coaches asked me to address was, I want to make sure that we're, you know, up to par on what we're replacing, and, you know, and- and we sat down at the end of the season. I specifically addressed that in the meeting. I want to sit down at the end of the season and look at any damages to the field that need to be with receding, you know, things that might have to go into that, and- and Teddy agreed that the Hoppers would help out with that as well, too, so.
Mr. Hunt, do you have any idea what it costs, like, or Jessica might can tell us this, what it costs to turn the lights on, uh, for a baseball game? I guess that was a question for Hopkins Electric Service.
I don't.
I didn't. What if they got counsel anywhere that could tell us that?
Hopkins Electric Service is quite a bargain.
The- the six thousand divided by the two fifty is twenty-four games.
Yeah.
So-
So it's- it's around there. I mean, we talk about rainouts, and you talk about if they host a playoff game, and of course, they take off one day a week when they play, and then half those games are home games, so it's- it's in the neighborhood of twenty-five.
I- I mean, like, um, Attorney Lackey said, I think our groups were making a lot of money in the first years, and if they still are, I mean, we- we want to definitely do this.
We certainly, you know, we'll certainly monitor it, you know, now, you know, Mr. Benz and I have taken interest to meet with him and- and find out more about what's going on there, and we'll see how the year goes, and if, you know, we said- we'll sit down and look at it.
Hope we can have a season. That would be great if they-
I- I think they- I think they fully believe they will. They- they've already had some host families they've talked to to try to get stuff lined. That was their biggest concern last year. It's the main reason they canceled. People didn't want to let players in to stay at their houses, you know, with COVID-nineteen going on.
I think if we stayed tied up all winter with COVID, I think, uh, it will be a very strong spring season of baseball, so-
Hope so.
I think a lot of people will be ready to be out.
There was a big push in the K H S double A meetings the other day to make sure that- that spring sports was given what they deserved, since they were canceled last spring. All the spring sports were canceled. So they said, anything they discussed with basketball and whatnot, said, you know, that the focus was to make sure we- we protected spring sports this year.
Okay, right. So we have a motion in a second. Ms. Edwards, can you call the row on the consent?
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item is the individual board member and superintendent comments and concerns. Mr. Moore, would you like to start us this evening?
Sure, I just, you know, I- 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 I guess my greatest concern is- is that we are in the business to educate. It's the Christian County Board of Education, and, uh, I just, I- I hope that we're not letting any of these kids fall through the cracks. Um, I know that we've got things put in place now, as we talked about with the SWAT thing, but we've just got to make sure that we're educating these kids. We don't want to look down the road four or five years, um, and- and see that we- we dropped the ball somewhere. Um, I- I know that- that- that Mr. Benz and staff's doing everything that they possibly can, and I have full confidence in it, um, in what they're doing, but I just, our kids need to be in school. There's nothing that we can do that's better than- I mean, we've got the greatest teachers that we can have, and- and there's nothing we can do better than put them face to face, and so I just, uh, I- it's- this is a puzzling time, in my opinion, you know? Uh, closing down our economy hurts our present, and then if we're closing our schools up and we're not making sure everything's happening properly, it could damage our future, too, and so, I- I've just beaten the drum, I guess, so, but I- I do thank you, Mr. Benz, for everything that you and your staff are doing, and I- I wish there was more we could do to help you.
Mr. Bell?
Well, I just think it's an opportunity to excel, you know, um, you know, even when I looked at the Studer surveys, um, our students were clamoring for interaction from teachers, and it might not be a face-to-face, but there's technology out there with Zoom and different ways of doing things. We want to be safe, but we want them to have access to a teacher that's responsive, not waiting for an hour, two hours, uh, like it, you know? If a student needs to interact with a teacher, it might not be face-to-face, but it could be Zoom, and I'm sure there'll be a- a lot of that, because I'm sure the rigor of the class is getting greater, because we're going further into the school year, you know? So I think there'll be plenty of opportunities for teachers that are in place in schools, buildings, to interface with students, because the students say they want a teacher, it might not be face-to-face, but hopefully, we can do it through Zoom or some other media.
Mr. Clark?
I'd just pretty much echo Mr. Moore and Mr. Bell. I- I think, um, I appreciate Mr. Benz on- in, uh, this team that he has here. I- I know it's a lot of, uh, I'm- I'm sitting amazed tonight that, um, you know, they signed up as educators and- and- and to have to make such decisions to- that have a whole lot of nothing in some ways to do with education, but, uh, I think you all have, um, been pretty fluid about being able to do that, and I'm- I'm impressed with that, and, um, I too agree that our children need to be in school, but I guess that's not my decision, so we'll- we'll do the best. I think we've got a good team to, you know, to, um, the alternative, and I just appreciate you guys, and thank- thank each of you. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
I have been in awe of the staff ever since I've been on this board, and just have watched them adapt and adapt and adapt, and, you know, if it's not financial, it's no classes and no kids and COVID and you name it, and I just want to tell you that I really do appreciate you, and I- well, what's this? We've got two more meetings we get to come to.
Forty-two days.
Yeah, and I will always support you, uh, because it's really important that the people in this community realize how hard you work, and it's not just someone saying, "Yeah, they're okay out there," you know, or have parties all the time. I wish you could have parties all the time. I think that would be- and I would come, and that would be really a happy time, but thank you all. Really appreciate it.
Can- can I get an alibi? I wanted to, uh, tell Ms. Darnall, I appreciate that, uh, financial presentation, uh, because I think that's going to bring transparency to our community members, that how they balance their checkbooks on a month-to-month, that we're doing that, too, and, um, just how we're learning how to read these dashboards. We're going to know how to interpret that data, but I think it's going to be, uh, a good learning for us as well as the community, especially with the, um, different ways we're being funded, uh, some of those are being taken away, such as FEMA, so I- I really appreciate that. Uh, I think that's going to help us with our relationship with- with, uh, you know, with- with the community, so thank you so much. Appreciate that.
I- I agree. Uh, it's- it's very easy to read. Uh, I think that, uh, people need to be able to see that worth a big chunk of our money is going into, uh, salaries, and- and we don't have oodles of money just sitting around that we can do lots with, by the time you add transportation in there and- and maintenance and things like that, so, um, I think it's a very good layout. It's a whole lot easier than this Muni's report in the back end, okay, so it is- is very nice. It's- I'm glad to be able to see it, uh, for two meetings, but it will be great going forward. Uh, I agree with, uh, with everyone's comments. Um, there's a lot of hard work being done in this district every day, and, uh, I too agree that our- our students need to be in the classrooms. I am- I am truly concerned about what parents are going to do when they work, and their children are going to have to stay at home by themselves, and it's- it's going to be tougher on families, because now a parent's going to work a full-time job and then come home to make sure their students got their homework done, because that's that parent's responsibility, too, not only that teacher, to educate these children. And- and that's tar- it's hard to do when you've worked a twelve-hour shift, and- and I'm- I'm truly concerned. I'm glad to see that we're- we've got a SWAT team, uh, at- at our schools, to be able to check on these kids, and to give them support while they're at home. Uh, that- that is- that is great news. I'm glad to hear that, um, we will have teacher support, and even after hours, because most people in this community don't work nine to five, okay, and, uh, it- it's hard for them to be able to get off that shift and hurry up and- and get home, but at least they'll be able to reach out to some- some staff, and I do appreciate that. Mr. Benz, I'm sorry that you're- that everyone's having to go through all of this.
Sorry.
Uh, I wish we could change things, um, uh, but you and your team, and by- when I say team, I mean this entire district, from principals to teachers, to cafeteria, to technology, bus drivers, aides, custodians. It takes everybody in this district to make this happen, and everybody's working harder, and, uh, it just amazes me the work that can be done, and the- the work that's done in this district, uh, and I do, uh, thank you all very much. I know we don't say it enough, but thank you again. Mr. Benz, what would you like to say?
Well, thank you to the board for those kind words, comments, and seeing us through these last twenty-four hours. It's been- it's been difficult, to say the least, a little bit frustrating, um, but we'll make it work, and we'll- we'll move forward. Um, I want to back up and say thanks to J- Jessica Darnall and the finance department here at the district office, and our school account- accountants, red books, financial, uh, bookkeepers for that audit finding that we had. That's a- that's a humongous
Man.
accomplishment in a district our size to have three audit findings out of fifteen, uh, organizations, fifteen schools, so-
That's never happened.
No, it never has, no, and it's just great.
Yeah.
Um, I want to say, uh, a big thank you, and, um, John helped me with this initiative, and so did Karen. We handed out twelve hundred, uh, about thirteen hundred candy bars and cokes, and thank you cards to our staff today. Um, we had done that anticipation of going into, you know, N T I for two days and give them a little bit of a reset, um, but that didn't- I don't think it'll last the whole way to January fourth. But- but we did do that to say thank you to our staff, uh, thank you to everything they've done, and- and they've just been tremendous, um, from September eighth back to July one, just everything they've done, the flexibility, the patience, the courage, uh, and the want to be in class with our kids. I left a first-grade classroom at Freedom, and Miss, uh, Laura Kavanaugh looked at me and said, "Please keep us in school, whatever you want, whatever you can do. I need to be in front of my kids, moving forward. I can't do it from home." So they- their desire's there. Uh, it'll come. We'll get back to work eventually. It's a bump in the road, and we'll make the best of our next seventeen days of N T I. I told principals today, "We're going to hold our ground." That's the key to this, is- is don't lose anything, don't go backwards. I don't expect major gains in N T I. If we can, that's great, but just hold where we're at. Let's get to Christmas break safely, responsibly, and be ready to return when it's- the time is right, and I want to wish our football teams good luck tomorrow night in the first round of playoffs, and I want to say to everybody that to have a great, safe, happy, um, safe, uh, distance-free Thanksgiving, um, and thank you to the board, and, uh, we'll- we'll continue to update you as we move forward.
I do want to say one more thing, uh, to technology, Mr. Wilson. Um, one blessing has come out of all of this, and that's the CARES money that has enabled us to buy all these Chromebooks, because it's been on a wish list for many, many years to be able to get computers in the hands of our kids, and so we've got to always look at the bright side of something, that- that has happened, and because of his group and team, we've- we've been able to get that, and it's perfect timing since we're- we're now going into N T I, so thank you again, Mr. Wilson and your group. Mr. Lackey, is there a need to go into closed session?
Uh, no, but I do want to say, uh, thanks to Jessica for that. You all know I kind of pay attention to the numbers a little bit myself, and that presentation is very helpful, I think, so.
Thank you. So no need to go in closed session?
No, no need to go in closed session.